Today is October 7th, 2013, the time of 7:00 PM. The regular meeting agreed Brooklyn Council's call and order. It's not a question of all the cell phones, papers, any other electronic devices. Silence, please. Roll call, please. Bridgette.
Blake.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Daryl.
Here.
Jane.
Here.
Next item is approved minutes from the September 3rd meeting. Does Council see any changes or amendments to be made? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes as received. So move.
Second.
You for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of you saying aye. Ms. Bassett, thank you. Old business. This is Orders 2013-11, City Budget on Second Reading. We probably do all these together, I think, Kim, Bridgette.
I'd rather do them in a picture.
Okay.
Just for clarity, second and final reading.
Second and final reading. I'm making a motion that we adopt ordinance 2013-11, the 2014 city budget on the second prime reading.
Second. Any further discussion? I have a roll call on that, Bridgette.
Blake.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett. Yes, thank you. Next item is Orders 2013-6, Utility Salaries, on Second Read.
Making motion to pass, Second Read.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Blake.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Second prime reading is passed, thank you. Next item is adoption of ordinance 2013-7, City Salaries, 2014, Second Prime Read.
Making motion that we adopt ordinance 213-7, City Salaries.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to make one on the salary ordinance. I gave everybody a copy of the budget tonight. Real quickly, I did mention that Daryl, for what it was. There is a rank line item approval change in mechanic's salary under Motor Vehicle Item. And in the current salary ordinance, we just have what the rank pay was for last year. It was not changed on the salary ordinance. On the salary ordinance, it will say $7,000, and it was approved at $8,000. It's about halfway through your line items on the budget. I know there was some discussion about it. It originally requested at 8,500, and Mark wanted to reduce it down to eight, but it was not on the salary ordinance because we had asked the department head to submit a separate rank increase or rate change separately, independently of the line items. So it's on the line items as approval, but it's not the salary ordinance. So that's why I wanted to interject on the 2013-7, because that is where it's at. So we probably need to say whether we want to go ahead and approve the line item, and we can get amended on the salary ordinance.
Do we amend it on my motion then? Is that what I need to do?
Yes, if you want the salary ordinance to match the line item as it relates to the rank mechanic salary, then you would need to move to amend the approval of 2013-7 to, as submitted with the amendment, to the rank mechanic salary item to $8,000.
I want to do exactly what the city attorney just said.
I have to complement my amendment. Ordinance 2013-7 to increase the rank pay for mechanic from $7,000 to $8,000.
So wait a second.
We had a motion in the second.
Actually, there was a motion in the second to approve the ordinance as it was presented.
So do we have to withdraw the motion to approve the salary ordinance amended and then reapproved?
Hold on a second.
So you could...
That is a safe way.
Give me a second. Yes. You have got a pending, you have multiple motions currently open. The easiest to be would be... We all know what we're trying to do, I'm just trying to make sure the record's clear. You have two motions, you have his motion to amend, to approve as amended, you also have Glenn's motion to amend, which are both essentially the same motion. Neither one of you have received a second on either of your...
I seconded Daryl's.
He seconded.
Then vote on his.
We had a motion to approve the salary.
As amended.
Not as amended.
Yeah.
Initially, it was just to approve salary ordinance.
You need to take...
You were saying what happened.
Right.
I said what he said, which...
You need to...
I understood, I was trying to put it in simple language.
Right.
What you were saying, and that's why I made the motion to amend it. But what happened, you withdraw that motion. I withdraw that motion, there's no second, it's there. Now you can do what you want to do.
Okay. Daryl has made the motion as amended.
Yes.
On this line item, on the salary ordinance. Jamie has seconded.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Bridgette.
Blake.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett, thank you.
Sorry.
Next item, Orders 2013-8, Elected Salaries, 2014.
Making motion we pass 2013-8, Elected Salaries, 2014, on Second Read.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Glenn.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Motion passes now, Mr. Bassett. Adoption Orders 2013-9, Greensboro Community School Budget for 2014.
Making motion we pass ordinance 2013-9, Greensboro Community School Budget, 2014.
Second.
For discussion?
Thank you, Terry.
Yes.
Tom, do you hear anything say being named? If there's nothing else, roll call.
Glenn.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Bassett, thank you, gentlemen. New business. Diane Moore, New Directions. If the council remembers in January when the profits came for requests, they had applied the $20,000 vote. In fact, the council decided that they wanted to stick with the last years, which is $10,000. And it was also stated that if there was emergencies, it perceived the need that she could come back to present the request with... So Miss Moore is here tonight to explain to us why she requested this.
And I know that your time is very valuable. I tried to create this handout to try to simplify things. The first few pages deal with number one, all the financial documentation. The very first page is expenses. The first column shows what was approved by our organization for 2013. The second column shows my anticipated amount for the fourth quarter expenses yet to come for this year. You will note that the salary for counseling program director and victims advocate are both up. That's because we have had to increase their hours throughout the year. We did receive some grant money, or we've received promise of grant money for those increases, and I'm going to get into that a little bit later. Everything else is under the shelter and office facility, that's pretty cut and dried. I tried to be very conservative on numbers. And if you go to page two, you see that the totals, the total comes in for the quarter at slightly under $45,000. Then, if you would skip to the next page, we'll come back to page two in a second. The next page shows anticipated income. There again, the first column shows what was approved for the whole year. The second column shows anticipated income in the fourth quarter. I'm sure you noticed the highlighted yellow. Those two grants are from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. One's called the VOCA, one's called the STOP. Anyway, both of those are kind of pending what's going to be going on with regards to government shutdown. They're both funded through federal programs, BALA, I think you might have heard of, the Violence Against Women Act is one of them, and there's another act. The one that's really at risk is the STOP. The VOCA grant, I think, is a lot more sound than the STOP. We're already into the second quarter of the STOP. I've been told through an email that we should get funding, but they haven't gotten that secured, and it started in July. So we're already one quarter behind on receiving STOP. But those were both to fund increases in staff. The total anticipated income for the quarter, if we get those two grants, is $29,792. If you flip back to page two of the budget items, you'll see a little summary with the checking balance. I've got a sheet in here that is your page four that shows the printoff from main source of our checking balance as of a couple of days ago. Anticipated fourth quarter income at just under $30,000 leaves total available assets at $47,900. Anticipated fourth quarter expenses are just under $45,000. That gets us down really tight to a little over $3,000. That's if all of those monies come in, and the two ICJI grants are pretty uncertain. I do think we will get the funds, I just don't know if we will get them by the end of the year. And if you go, the second point I wanted to talk about was our current client load. We are very busy at New Directions. We have had, August and September were our two largest months ever. If you look at the graph, the red lines, the red bars show 2013 client activity, the blue bars show 2012, and the black shows 2011. With the exception of July, where we had a dip, you see we're still having consistent growth in the number of people turning to us for services. We've had an increase in the number of males recently as well. We're starting to have males come in for counseling and for assistance for other services. We're having couples come in as well, just very busy. So I wanted to show you that, so you know why we need all of this salary funding in particular. The second graph page shows the history of victims served by our agency. It looks like this one here. And as you can see, we have dramatically increased from that of other years. We're on track. Right now, if you compare the first three quarters of 2012 to the first three quarters of 2013, we're up 20 primary clients, and I didn't have time to figure secondaries before today, so we're probably up about 40 to 45 clients over last year. And primary victims is the adult aged 18 or over that comes to our organization for support. Secondaries are other persons in that household. So I anticipate that for 2013, we will hit at least 350 on our total victims, maybe more. The next page, I thought you might be curious, well, how do we use volunteers? I've shared some of this information with you before. Have not had time to figure 2013 volunteers, but we still have a strong use of volunteers, much stronger than in previous years. I started in 2011 and tried to grow our volunteer base. We used 103 last year. I would say we're close to doing at the same pace as last year for volunteers. We try to do as much as we can. I thought you might also be curious, what are you trying to do to look for funding? The next page shows the grant writing history. For the first time ever in 2013, we're receiving Indiana Criminal Justice Institute money, and we've actually been promised two different grants through them, and that's pretty big for our organization, considering we never, ever got ICJI money in the past. Those are all the grants I've been putting in for and the results. The last page talks about how you guys' support has, the history of your support. I went back to 2004. And if you look, in 2004, for $10,000 of support, there were 26 victims served. 2005, for the same amount, 21 victims, 14 victims for the same amount in 2006, 11 victims for an entire year in 2007, 14 in 2008, when you upped it to 15,000. Anyway, you get the picture. Like I said, I think we're going to be at at least 350 victims for 2013. I also wanted to talk to you about item number three on the very first page. As I said, we have recently expanded. Carol Burr is here, she's our counselor, and she also does victims advocacy. She's expanded from 20 when we first passed the budget, now she's up to 28. And as of today, she's up by, what is it, 15 hours, I think. As of, even though we've increased her hours, she's put in 15 more hours than she's been paid so far, just in the past couple of weeks. Our victims advocate is also up to 28 hours. She's over on her hours as well. So it's not like we're sitting around. The other thing I'd like you to know is, we are getting so many more calls on item number two, Point C. Five out of the last six weekends, we have had 911 calls from law enforcement, which I am really glad, because we're getting referrals from law enforcement. We put our hours in during the week, then we get the weekend stuff, we try to make it up the next week and cut, but we've already got clients scheduled for counseling sessions and things. It's very difficult. That's pretty much everything I wanted to share, and we would really appreciate your consideration for additional funding.
Diane, do you accept clients from Greensburg to Kear County?
Occasionally. Not very often. There are times, though, say for example, one situation I can recall, I had a woman call me from Ripley County. Well, Ripley County uses Safe Passage generally. But her son was best friends with one of the law enforcement officer that was in charge of one of his sons, plus she knew some of the people that worked at Safe Passage. And one thing that you don't maybe know about victims, oftentimes they are very embarrassed about what's been going on, so we provided some services for her. Occasionally, we had someone in within the last month that had moved here recently from Bartholomew County, but we ended up providing her with an outreach to get back in Bartholomew County. She had come to live with her father for a while, he ended up trying to strangle her himself, so it wasn't safe for her to be here, so we made sure that she had the means to get back into Bartholomew County. So yes, we do, but the strong majority of our victims are right here. And in addition, I would estimate that we have at least one to two strictly homeless that we help in a given month, every month. Oftentimes, they come in on Fridays. There are very few places open on Fridays, besides us.
Do we have a motion to amend, or at least discuss making this an option to New Directions?
I have a question. Are you looking at a specific request in terms of dollar amount, or do you rest them up? I mean, what's the...
Well, you guys...
They're asking for the additional $5,000.
Yeah, you guys had mentioned the $5,000.
That's what you're asking.
Why...
You're not looking at trying to cover the difference...
To be perfectly honest, I would really entertain if you had any amount farther than that, but I'm guessing that it's the $5,000. I mean, that's what you had told me before. As you can see by our numbers, we are really cutting it close, and I'm really not certain about the VOCA and the STOP grant. I feel that we're going to get them, I just don't know. And I, it may end up that we will be shutting down for some days in December.
Glenn, do you think, I'm going to start to speculate, but if you've got the other two accounts which amounts to how many thousand, eight, nine, 10, 13, nearly $14,000, if you received those funds in a sufficient amount of time, would you still need the $5,000 this year?
Yes, yes, we will still need the $5,000.
That's pretty stephanious.
Yeah, and normally, I've been in this position just shy of three years, it'll be three years in January. Normally, we are running around $20,000 in our checking all the time, and we just keep dipping. And once I was crunching numbers, I started realizing we're really, really going to be tight. And some of it is due to the uncertainty of those funds. I think the STOP is very unrealistic that I will get it by the end of this year, just because the grant was supposed to start in July, I'm still supposed to be tracking all the numbers as of July, but we haven't even gotten a final document saying that we're really getting it.
Did you ask for $20,000 to begin with?
Yes.
Or is it maybe $15,000? I told you you could come back at a later time and ask for more, so I didn't...
Yeah.
You know, I think a lot of it is, and this is just my opinion, I think this is a great organization, more than worthwhile, however, I think we have to be responsible in how we spend our funds. I think that's why we said we weren't going to give $20,000. You know, I understand the need, but I think you have to push back, some of this back on different organizations. And in my opinion, this is just my opinion, you guys please do what you want, but I don't think we should grant any more money. We gave $15,000, that's my opinion. I think we have to be good stewards of the taxpayer's money, we have to use it the right way, and every year we have more and more non-for-profits coming in asking for money, asking to fund their organizations. They're all great organizations, but at some point in time, we have to use that money fiscally responsibly. So my opinion would be to not grant it, that's my opinion. And I completely understand why you need it, but I, that's my opinion.
Let me ask some more questions, maybe this clarifies some things, concerns. You know, and Jamie, I agree with you. I've been thinking the last two, three months, January's coming up, or what are we going to do next year, or what are we going to do? You have, you need to help people, we really need to help, and our need, and we have no other place to turn. You know, why do we have to need more clients than what we're in the past? Are you doing such a good job that everybody's freeing up and admitting to it and coming in and trying to get help? I mean, when does it slow down? When do we meet a plateau? You know, so we can set something, you know, so you know what's going to cost you?
I really don't know. Surrounding communities have even larger numbers than what we do. The difference is, prior to, from 2000 to 2010, our organization basically only did shelter. And now we have provided non-residential services. 98 to 99% of what we do is non-residential services. Mr. Chris Steven here can tell you some of the things that we do. He is over at our place an awful lot, an awful lot of stuff is related to legal issues. It may be something with a school issue, it may be something with housing. To actually provide shelter is oftentimes not what the majority of victims need. That's why our numbers have grown. It's because we've expanded non-residential services, like the counseling.
In what cases?
In what cases?
What are the expenses in the...
Staff, counseling, all of the... There's days where we might make a dozen calls per client, trying to do, tie them into the resources that they need in our community. We do the free counseling, we might transport them, we meet them in the hospital ER, we meet them in the police stations. It's a lot of one-on-one time, a lot of safety planning, a lot of stabilization of the situation that's going on to get them in a safe place. Most of the time, a victim will prefer to not be in shelter, they'd rather be at a friend's or relatives, they'd rather, we do transports out of town to safety as well.
And you know, I know that abuse sometimes doesn't stop, it escalates into worse states for all its members. I have one more question, on the council side. What is the ratio between city and county residents that are needing your help?
I would have to go back and do an awful lot of prep work to get that number. I count everybody through the grants that I get as whether or not they live in Decatur County. I don't separate them out. I would say that over half of our victims live in the city. What would you say? I would say it's maybe 60/40.
Because the population's much greater in county than it is in city.
The thing about the county, though, I think some of them that are on the fringes, like if they're on the edge of the county, close to Batesville, they may, you know, end up in that area, and the same with Bartholomew County. Definitely, it's not more county victims than city, it's a fairly even split, I would say off the top of my head, but I could get you that information, if that could make a difference.
Couple of questions. How long is your relationship with the victim in terms of when they call and you transition, you're working to transition them into a safer environment, or getting them into another better circumstance? What's the length of time typically? You know, some will be longer, and others because of more severity or complexity of their circumstance, but on average, the time you get the call, and you could break it up between, you know, more severe cases and the calling about the date...
I would say, on average, it's three to four weeks of contact. Now, we do have one client that's been coming in, and we've been providing services for almost two years now. An awful lot of legal stuff with power and control issues related to a divorce that's going on, and games regarding visitation with their child.
Well, the reason for my question is that I think that you are doing a real service, and there is the crisis kind of counseling that you need to take care of, the long... of, the long-term kinds of things. I don't think that should be your mission. I think they need to find a way, and you are, it sounds like you are transitioning-
Right.
-save for that one that-
We do wean them.
-seems like taking advantage of-
Carol weans them off of counseling. Um, we'll start out typically once a week, unless there's some huge things going on, and that'll be more than once a week. And then, after a month or two, if, if they're still coming in, an awful lot of times, once they get out of their crisis, they, they stop coming, um, for some of the follow-ups that would probably keep them safe more long-term and not have them come back to us. We do have them come back to us, maybe six months or a year later, in a new relationship.
Like that.
Yeah. It varies greatly, Glenn.
Yeah, I'm sure it does. I know it's kind of an unfair question, but my point of my question was really trying to find out, is it, is it something that you really are helping them transition, or is it, oh, is it becoming their form of-
And, yeah.
-of, uh, support where they need to find other ways?
Right. And the only client that has been that long-term, um, was, um, a near-death situation, and it was a lot of, um, assisting with, um, job and all that kind of stuff.
Certain, certain types, certain texts. Um, in terms of your funding for this year, I know that, uh, the county and the city provided support. I know you had called the other places, and have most of the other places fulfilled their, uh, pledges?
Um, yeah, um, the city, as you guys know, was at fifteen, the county was at fifteen, um, United Fund for two thousand thirteen was at seventeen. Um, those were the main funders, other than Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. And through, uh, July, we were receiving regular reimbursements from them. And things seemed to kind of change in July.
From which one?
Indiana Criminal Justice.
Oh, okay, yeah. Um, okay. Well, I, I appreciate what Jamie's perspective. I also think that taking care of taxpayer dollars is, is our responsibility, finding a way to utilize those in a productive manner that provides for the common good. And, um, while I share your concern that, uh, we're, it really looks like we're trying to become a, um, social service entity as opposed to a, um, public safety primarily, uh, public health through sewage and trash and so forth, um, transportation, those other kinds of things that have been traditional, uh, for city expenses, uh, and that these, many of these dollars that we have in certain funds are targeted primarily for, uh, particular functions, particular, uh, ways in which they provide for, uh, you know, um, I happen to think that utilization of these dollars in this way, in serving that number of people, does fulfill our obligation in being good stewards. Um, because I think this is a circumstance that if we don't take care of it in this manner, we're gonna be faced with it in other ways, and with a greater degree of cost, and not just financial cost. So, I, I'm not opposed to, uh, first, I wasn't opposed to twenty thousand to begin with, so you're not changing my perspective in that. I'm not opposed to supporting the additional five thousand dollars. That's what the request is, and that's what I'm just, I'm willing to do. Um, because I, I see that if this wasn't there, we would have bigger problems. And what we're doing with this fifteen, twenty thousand dollars is we're really leveraging that to a hundred, uh, four times the amount, probably, or five times the amount, or six times the amount, doing the work that they do, just in bringing in the dollars and being able to do that. So, for me, I'm okay with it. And I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to explain my, my perspective on it, my opinion, um, proving to do it.
May I make a, a point? And I, I make this not from my, as a city attorney, but as a head of someone who's dealt with this organization quite a bit. I will say that one of the things that I have observed in the year that I've been practicing here, uh, is, or over years, that the amount of legal aid that, that a lot of these people are getting from other organizations, uh, has diminished, which means a lot of them are turning to organizations like New Directions, uh, to fulfill, or, you know, to fill an informational void that, that they're not getting someplace else. I think that's one of the reasons why you're seeing an increase, um, in, in my opinion, from Carol and, and Diane's perspective maybe as well. You're seeing an increase in the amount of people who are requesting services because they're not getting those services other places. And that's, I do think that, that the people that I have interacted with, uh, through New Directions, are people that are in desperate need of, of a given situation. Um, they have no, no other particular recourse. And that's just my observation of what I'm seeing.
And we've been informed that, starting in two thousand fourteen, January first, all legal aid will end for victims of domestic violence crimes in our area and in the southeast region, including Bartholomew County, Ripley, Shelby, Rush, Franklin, Jennings.
Which came from where exactly?
Some money through ICJI and some other funding streams. It's gotten so tight, um, with the sequestration and stuff, uh, their entire, um, legal aid, um, grant for two thousand fourteen is gone. They're supposed to be helping us find pro bono, um, but the, the thing of it is, with domestic violence, when they go to pro bono, it takes quite a while to obtain an attorney that's willing to do the work. And we're talking about somebody that's in oftentimes grave danger. It's a very, very, gonna be a very difficult year next year. But I'm not asking for next year right now, I just am trying to get through. I would really hate to be closing down. I just feel like there's an awful lot of people that deserve to be treated with respect and deserve to be given these resources to get back up on their feet. Through no fault of their own, um, they have been victims of abuse.
And you know, I look at, Jamie, I agree with you a hundred percent. The few good things, we're gonna have to back up on some. I, I understand that, and I agree with that. But, you know, I agree with ninety-nine point nine percent of what Ms. Council Teddy just said. And not only is it not, you know, a cost to, a cost to the city taxpayer, there's other things involved. People tend to die, they're hospitalized, can't pay their hospital bills. That comes back on us, when we go pay our bills to the hospital. Uh, when the police are called, and the policeman walks up to a domestic dispute, their lives are in harm's way. Um, so, I'm conservative, but I also understand, sometimes it takes money to make money, it takes money to save money. And I also think it's a good place to make our efforts.
And our numbers are going up strongly because we're getting so many more referrals from people in the courthouse, from law enforcement, even from past clients. Um, and, you know, they all have a need, or they wouldn't be coming to us. I mean, it's, it's not an easy decision to make, to come to our organization, um, because of the embarrassment that so many of the victims feel, and the fear, um, of being caught.
I'm, I'm just stating my opinion. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, our past reimbursements that we've given here, is, you know, we've never given more than fifteen, so this would be more than we've ever given in the past. And I just, and I, I'm not saying it's not worthwhile, I'm not saying that money's not needed, I, I, just my opinion, 'cause I, I don't feel is the right use of taxpayer money in this case, to spend that much more. And I, I, that's my opinion. I agree with what, I, I understand what Glenn's saying, I understand what you're saying. And if the council so chooses, I'm one out of five votes. So, that's, I, I'm not going to argue, I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion.
Unless the council members want to speak, I, I don't think we don't live on this issue unless there's further information, somebody needs.
It looks like you're up at least twenty more victims than this last quarter, right?
We're up twenty more for the first three quarters of two thousand thirteen as compared to those same three quarters for two thousand twelve. That's only counting primaries. I did not have time, I apologize, I did not have time to figure secondaries. So, we're probably up around forty or more, because usually you can count on at least one secondary per primary sometimes.
So, it would be hard to operate what you did last year, with forty or fifty more victims for the second?
It is getting harder and harder. Um, and we are constantly trying to juggle. We also have a safety issue. Um, we always try to make sure there are two of us there, working. It, you can get into some rather difficult situations. And so, you know, you have to have two people there, and you have to have two trained people there. Um, we use volunteers for almost everything other than client interactions. Even for client transports, we'll try to use volunteers, but not interaction.
I think it's like what Glenn said, if we don't help it, it'll backfire, but, so I can, I'm looking forward.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a motion, so worth the five thousand addition.
I'll make that motion. Second.
For discussion, council. Hearing nine, roll call, please, Bridget.
Darren.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yeah.
Terry.
Yes.
Floyd.
Yes.
Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
I really appreciate your support, I really do. Thank you.
Next item, Don Galloway, BSA Housing Project. Uh, to refresh your memories, your solo, uh, they were here and for our support on the dress factory. And if the grants were awarded to another individual for three units instead of one, on the dress factory, and they've returned to the city and asked me to support it. And I have my concerns, but I wanted the council's, I'm asking the council's input, uh, based on the information that Ms. Galloway will explain to you what, what has changed, because the criteria has changed since then. Thanks, Galloway.
I just, my full introduction, but no, basically, I'm here tonight with Mel Fields from Developmental Services. He's in the back here. He, let me speak him up and do all the talking. We're gonna call on him if we need to, so, um, well, if you haven't figured it out by now, we're very interested in rehabilitating this historic structure in Greensburg, and we're interested in making it affordable housing. When I say affordable housing, I want to clarify something with you, 'cause I read something published in your paper recently that was a little incorrect. Um, when I say affordable housing for this project, we're talking about low-income housing tax credit development, very similar to Tree City Estates, which Developmental Services also owns. In fact, I think you have a couple more properties here. I pronounced it right, German place, downtown and Windermere, out across, four twenty-one. So, these, these properties are affordable housing developments because they look at individuals' income, and they set the rents for that person's income. These are not what people think of as Section Eight properties, they're not, they're, their rents are not paid through government subsidies. I just want to make that clear to you. These developments are funded through private equity, and then equity that we get by selling the tax credits from the state. So, if you have any more questions on that, I'm happy to answer. But I just wanted to clarify, the affordable housing, something interesting, as we started looking at this, because Mayor's right, um, there was an award made here last year at the historic Greensburg Square Senior Housing Property. Knowing that, we took a little closer look at the demographics for Decatur County and Greensburg. And we learned some pretty interesting things. I'm gonna bore you just a little bit with some statistics, 'cause I think they're important for why, um, you might be able to help us in supporting this development. And that is, Greensburg has a very strong rental market. The affordable housing developments, like what I'm talking about, run ninety-five percent occupancy. I was just at Tree City Estates today, talking with the manager there, and she has wait lists for her one- and two-bedroom units. Your market rate properties, they don't have any income restrictions whatsoever, um, in the study we did in August, running over ninety-seven percent occupancy rate. So, what that really tells us is that there are individuals and families who might be looking for housing options here in Greensburg, but they can't find affordable housing. And the reason is, because it's full, which is, that's okay. That's, and, and I think sometimes also what happens is individuals get into housing that's cost burdened them. They're paying more than thirty-five percent of their income for housing. And that's happening here. There's, in fact, twenty-one percent of the population in Decatur County is paying more than thirty-five percent of their income for housing. What we also learned is there's a large group of individuals in Decatur County that are age forty-five to fifty-four, and another large age group, ten years younger than that. Which is interesting, because a lot, you keep hearing about the baby boomers and the over fifty-five and that sort of thing. And yes, there's a market for that, but here, there's also a market just under that, that needs to be served. There are, the largest group are renter households, who learn in Decatur County, are one- and two-person households, obviously, looking for one- and two-bedroom apartments. That's what we noticed in the study. We also, um, and the study also showed us that there is a slight increase from now until two thousand and eighteen for individuals making thirty thousand and below in their annual income. That's important to us, because that's the target population that we would be serving with this development. So, thirty thousand or below, um, the annual, their annual income. So, through the study, we determined that the most needed type of housing option for the dress factory, um, would be one- to two-bedroom units that are not age-restricted. That's the big difference here. We want to be able to market this property to individuals without age restriction, young couples, maybe small families, and seniors. So, we also want to just open it up to all of these markets. So, the project otherwise has not changed. It's still, um, the old dress factory, it's still gonna end up being three floors, it's going to have thirty-nine units. We currently have the mix at thirty-two bedroom and one nine-bedroom. In fact, the only thing that's changed is it's not going to be restricted for seniors. So-
One nine?
I'm sorry, did I say that backwards?
One nine bed-
One nine bedrooms? No, I'm sorry. Thirty-two bedroom and nine one-bedroom. Thank you. Thanks for catching me on that. That would've been hard to do.
She's a shoe out there.
Tried that from the record.
She did that for me.
I'm reading too fast, I apologize. Um, real quick, the one thing we will do is, it will still be one-hundred percent MDA assessable, so we will still be marketing a project that where individuals can age in place. So, if, if in further years, they have any type of mobility issues, they can, they can remain living at this facility. So, with that, I'm gonna open it up for questions, and-
Okay, just a couple of clarifications.
Sure.
Last time, we were looking at primarily senior housing, which is what the historic Doug House Square really is. Limited guy only, they can only do senior housing, or they can do-
Yeah, it's a senior development, so fifty-five years in.
Okay. And your project is going to be without age restriction?
Correct.
You mentioned something about, um, the income of thirty thousand or less. You are then going to target only, only families making three thousand or less are eligible?
Correct.
Without their, notwithstanding what age they are, but the income is, is limited at that?
That's correct. And the reason I can give you that number is 'cause it's one- and two-bedroom apartments, which means we're looking at, in, uh, families of no more than four individuals, but likely three, two, and one families.
Yeah. Well, I'm not, I'm just thinking about the income level. And will that income level increase as, um, hopefully, no inflation, but as, as the years go by?
Yeah, it, it always increases. Every year, we get a new-
Yeah, a little higher. And then, and depending upon, so the family that makes twenty-nine thousand, the family that makes nineteen thousand, both need two-bedroom apartment, but their rent would be calculated based on the range.
Affordable for their income, correct. One good thing, since you brought up income, is if an individual moves in making twenty-nine thousand a year, maybe two of them, and they increase their annual salary, they can remain. So, it's just-
Up to?
Yeah, up to anything.
Oh, really?
Up to however much they end up making, which is nice. However much they end up making, which is nice, yeah.
Then their, their, their rent goes up accordingly?
No, we can't, our rents are restricted, so if we move them in at a certain rent...
It's a deal then.
I know, it is quite the deal, it, well, it's meant to be that way, so people can, can improve their quality of life and remain living in a, in a nice place.
And they have, have to give proof of their income, maybe?
Absolutely. It's quite a process.
And my concern was, with the housing, was a concern. When we have, in every community, owes a dear community to take care of the less privileged, but when we do that, that puts a burden on the taxpayer and schools. And if we had thirty-one bedrooms, thirty-nine two-bedrooms, I feel much better about it, but the, you know, two bedrooms, it's more opportunity for children. And if they are low income, then they're eligible for the sets of facilities they get, the security.
What we have found, even if it, if it were going to be a senior, we were going to do that many two bedrooms, as you know, I didn't change the unit mix, but I, seniors like to have that extra bedroom as well, um, so the other, um, thing that I'm working with here is an old building, and it's hard to adapt them into housing, so rather than go through trying to reconfigure that, and even if I did, I might not be able to make the budget work with just one bedrooms.
And, and you, you know, the, the old building is, is a door, I don't want to say it went down the hill, I'd like to see utilized, there's a lot of things to consider, you know, the good points and the bad points, both. That's, that's where to go, that's what best the council's in. This is a good question.
I guess I, I just wanted to be clear on what we're doing here, we're just basically either pledging support or not, is that it? I mean, there's, okay, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. And I think that, I'm sorry, I, I was going to make the comment about the, the burden on the school system, I, I understand your thoughts, but I think those people are going to be there anyway, I think it's just a matter of where they're going to be, this gives them an opportunity.
And, and, Jamie, I think our community, Art is putting their fair share of body population compared, probably more so than a lot of other communities.